I'd like to call the May Meeting of the Planning Board to order, please. I welcome everybody here tonight coming to the meeting. We'll begin with a roll call.
Hey, Bearfoot, here. Randy Hundy.
Here.
Anthony Harrow.
Yeah.
Rick Hines.
Here.
Matt Noble.
Here.
Johnny Penner.
Here.
Maria Rogerson.
Here.
Kenneth Ross.
Yeah.
Danny Smith.
Here.
And Mr. Chairman Clayton Malloy Jr. will be absent tonight.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will have a prayer, which I will have that part, and then Maria Rogerson will lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's pray together. Lord, we give you thanks for this beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for the blessings that we all enjoy. We're just gracious for this time that we could come together and go about this agenda. We just ask that you be with us, that you guide us, and that any and all decisions that we might make tonight would be in the best interest of all parties. I say it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, one housekeeping issue here, approval of the minutes of the April 19th meeting.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as mailed.
Second. Second motion by Mr. Hines, and second by Mr. Ross. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so I guess we're moving into the conditional use permit request. Is that Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have, this is a little bit of a unique situation, not having one of these come before the Planning Board before. This is a conditional use permit request for the web sand mine, and southern land, and timber is the output. This request is for a conditional use permit to allow a new sand mine. It's 138.54 acres, which includes 15 and a half bonded acres, and I'll explain that here in just a minute. Property is owned by James and Jerry Emmert on Shepherd Mill Road, parcel number 33464. Land use plan designates the parcel as rural residential agricultural and agriculture open natural resource. The reason this is before this board tonight, typically, conditional use permits do go before the Board of County Commissioners. Commissioners have the option in the ordinance to refer these back to the Planning Board for recommendation. So the Commissioners did hear this request on April 17th. They referred it back to the Planning Board in accordance with Section 3L3 of the zoning ordinance. And given that new evidence may be presented tonight that was not heard by the Board of County Commissioners, these are quasi judicial procedures. And so, given that there may be new evidence that the Board of Commissioners didn't hear, we've been advised that by our legal staff that the Board, this Board, should also hold a separate public hearing using those same quasi judicial procedures. Those procedures have to adhere to the following guidelines, and the Board had a presentation from our legal staff last month regarding these. Again, the purpose of the hearing is to establish facts. It's not to gather opinions about the desirability or popularity of the project. Any witnesses that come up and speak, they are witnesses, so they must be under oath. Cross examination must be allowed. Testimony must be supported by relevant competent material evidence. So again, no opinions on the case, as such, they have to be supported by that evidence. The Board must maintain a detailed record of its hearing. There should be no ex parte communication, so no communication from anybody on this Board with any of the parties involved. Any site visits that were conducted are permissible, but any information that was obtained on those visits should be disclosed at this hearing. Written findings of fact are required, and any reasons for disapproval have to be provided in writing, and decisions may be appealed to Superior Court. So again, the Board tonight is asking for a recommendation. The Board of County Commissioners is asking for a recommendation, so this would go to them in their June meeting, and they would be the ones actually issuing the permit. So tonight is not, this Board is not taking the final decision on this request tonight. It's just a recommendation. So this time, I'd like to swear in any witnesses that want to come up to speak, and that would include anybody in the audience that's here tonight to speak, either on behalf of or against the request tonight.
All those that are signed that would speak, if you can step forward, please. Is there anyone that prefers to a farm and not put their hand on the ballot? Do you swear that the testimony you give to the Planning Board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? If so, we say aye.
So as far as the mining area, you see it's located on Shepherd Mill Road. It's just south of its intersection with Satterwhite Road, right at the Beaufort County line. There you see, highlighted in yellow, is the actual boundary of the mining permit, or the mining area. And the whole property you see is zone RA, which mining is permitted in RA with a conditional use permit. Existing land use in the area, you see it's predominantly agricultural undeveloped land. There's scattered residential home sites located around the property, primarily to the south, but for the most part, the majority of the surrounding properties are agricultural or just undeveloped woodsland. As per Section 8 DDD of the Pitt County zoning ordinance, development standards for mining, quarrying, sand mines, and mineral extraction include a minimum 100-foot use separation from the edge of any pit, hours of operation when there is blasting involved, screening, and they must obtain a valid state issued mining permit. And the screening actually is in the form generally of berms or existing vegetation. So this is a copy of the site plan for the mine itself. See, the area highlighted in blue is the property line, and then the area in the dashed red line is the boundary of the mining permit, or the mining area. There's existing vegetation they're planning on utilizing around the entire perimeter of the property. And then the area you see in the red hatched area with the dashed line, that is the area that's actually being bonded to start with. So that's 15 and a half acres of the total, almost 140 acre mining area. So the bond, the bonded area is where they would actually be doing the excavation. So to start with, they'll be in that red area that you see on the screen. And then as they proceed on, they'll have to increase the bond, or change the bond to include that new acreage. The Board must deny the permit if it does not meet four criteria. The Board has to conclude that the development as proposed in its proposed location more probably than not will materially endanger the public health or safety. Our staff commentary on this is that we feel like the mine will be separated from adjoining properties by a minimum 100-foot buffer. It's going to be screened by existing vegetation, and it will not materially endanger the public health or safety. If it will substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, our staff commentary is that the proposed separation meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the mine will not be visible from adjacent properties. The proposed use therefore will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties. That the use will not be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and our staff commentary is that the area in which the mine is to be located is predominantly agricultural with very limited residential uses. There's an existing sand mine within close proximity to the proposed location also. That the use will not be in conformity with the land use plan, thoroughfare plan, or other plan officially adopted by the Commissioners, and our commentary is that the site conforms with the land use plan and will not impede the county's thoroughfare plan. Therefore, Staff does recommend two motions. First motion will be to acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete, and that it complies with all the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance. And the second motion will be to recommend approval of the conditional use permit to the Board of County Commissioners, subject to the development standards of Section 8 of the Pitt County zoning ordinance. Also, we have two additional conditions that we're recommending. The first is to obtain a no rise certification for any portions of the mine that are located within the non encroachment area of the floodplain. And there's a small, there's a containment berm that is shown being within that location. So if that berm remains in that area, we'd have to get a no rise certification. Then also to comply with all applicable NC DOT requirements for the driveway. So with that, we'd like to entertain public comments. Again, just as a note, any witnesses that come up to speak must be under oath. The Board will then make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and they are scheduled to hold another public hearing. This will be, that'll be the third hearing on this request on June 19th, 2017, at which time they'll take action on that request. With that, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to open up the public hearing.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, questions for Eric here before we leave the podium?
Mr. Chair, I would just like to note, too, we do have some folks in the audience tonight. Some folks representing the mine are here tonight, as well as we have a couple representatives from the state that can answer any questions about the mining permit process itself.
Okay, if there are no questions, then we'll move right into public comment. I have here, I guess it's Ewan, is that correct? James Ewan? And is it, I can't make out the first name, but I guess it's Mrs. Ewan. All right. If you would come up and state your name, give your address, and due to the number of people wanting to speak, please be reminded that it's a three-minute limit. Thank you.
Okay, my name's Elizabeth Ewan. I live at 1662 Shepherd Mill Road, which is the closest house to the proposed landmine, sandmine. We, when I left the Commissioners, the meeting last month, I was under the impression that we were going to come and discuss this. I didn't realize we were going to have to present evidence or anything like that. I thought it was just going to be a friendly discussion. But 11 months ago, we sent, when we first learned of this, we sent a petition in with, I believe it was 18 names against this, and just two months ago, we sent a second petition in with 20 names that were against this. The neighbors, we live in a very close community. There aren't a lot of residential houses because we don't want to live in a city-like environment. My husband and I moved here from New York eight years ago. We bought this because it was quiet. There were deer, there were wildlife. We have a small farm. And now, I'm faced with coming home from working every night and hearing trucks and equipment, and it's not going to be what I had planned on our retirement. It's an uncomfortable situation for all of us. Most of us are, you know, very quiet people. We don't play loud music, drive our cars fast, we stay home. So I think this is the wrong thing to be, to put in our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ewan, or James, going to speak? Mark Edwards?
I'm here to address any questions anybody might have.
Samir, is that it?
I'll be the state, just in case if there's any questions about mining permits.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. My name's John Hilton. My address is 1224 Pickens Street, Columbia, South Carolina. I'm one of the representatives for the mining company that has offered the proposed permit. Here to answer any questions you may have, and also wanted, the one additional piece of evidence that we would want to have offered, to the extent that the Ewans raised a complaint about the noise level, which was one of the complaints that was raised with the Board of Commissioners originally. Most of the complaints that were made, obviously, this is a vacant site. There's no active mining operations going on on this site currently. Therefore, no noise coming from this site. So the complaints of the noise, or the concerns about the noise, are arising from an existing operation that was just down the road. And this past week, planning staff, along with one of the sheriff, sheriffs, one of the sheriff's deputies, went out to the site and took a decimal, took some decimal readings on the site that is down the street that has given the, given the reason for the concern from the neighboring landowners, and that they hear the noise coming from that mine, and they're concerned about the new mine. And I would like for that evidence to be presented, and if the deputy, I believe, is here, that was there, could offer as to what they heard, and how those decimal readings compare to other operations, and how that would fall on a scale of being very noisier or not very noisy.
Yes, Deputy, Deputy Emili and myself have both been out to the site. We went out last Friday on the 12th, about 10:00 a.m., and took some meeting, took some decimal meter readings from several spots around, not this location, but another mine. It's the Hatchery Mine, which is a separate request that's not being heard by this Board. There were specific, specific complaints about noise being generated from that mine. And we took several readings at, we took a reading at the mine, and then also readings at the intersection of Ward's Bridge Road and Shepherd Mill Road, as well as a couple addresses on Ward's Bridge Road. And they came in, basically in the, around the 40 to 50 decimal range is where they came in. And according to the information that we've seen, general conversational speech is around 60 decibels. So it was, it was a very quiet, there wasn't any noise that was able to be heard from the mine from those locations. And it was the same, we went out there today at about 3:00, just to get a second set of readings under a different set of conditions, because it was afternoon, sunny. Last Friday was a little bit overcast, kind of rainy. And so today, we got basically the same readings, in the, around the 40 decimal range. But again, that was specific to that Hatchery Mine itself. So any, any sort of conjecture about the noise from the future mine is just sort of speculation on our part. I've had to answer any questions about it.
The mine you're speaking of, is it owned by the same company?
Yes.
Okay. Did they know you were coming?
They did not. We, in fact, we rolled up on them Friday morning and spoke to J.D. Riley, Joseph, Joseph Senior, and he came out and indicated to us that the pumps were running, and we took the meter readings right then with him present.
In terms of relative size, how does that mine compare to what is proposed here? In terms of activity, will it be equal? Will it be more? Will it be less?
The, the new mine, in terms of the proposed acreage, is larger, but the bonded acreage is much smaller.
But that will grow?
Yes, it will grow over time.
What about in terms of the amount of equipment to be used on the new mine versus what's being used?
That'd be a question for, for the operators.
The operation, the operation's going to be very similar. The equipment will be very similar, if not exactly the same, and the, and the general process of scooping the dirt out of the ground with an excavator and running it through one, one set of equipment, one set of screen, will be exactly the same process. Pretty simple, you scoop it, you run it through a filter, it produces, it sieves the sand, it gives you, splits them out into different sized particles, and then you're able to use those different sized particles to make different products. So the operation will be the same, to the extent that there would be any specific questions about the differences in the two permits. The representative of the State Mining Department will be able to answer those. But the, the question about the bonded acreage, it will, it is common that it would move.
Just progression.
Exactly. That it wouldn't necessarily grow as it would change.
Oh, question.
And to that point, we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to have to bond any more acreage than we would be required to. So that would, that is the one precipitating factor there.
A question, Ms. Hilton. What are your hours and days of operation?
Our hours of operation will be sunrise to sunset.
Days.
Seven days a week would be our proposed hours of operation.
So on that note, like now, you know, it's sunrise is at 6:00 a.m. If y'all begin 6:00 a.m., run until 8:00, 8:00 o'clock at night.
Yes, that's right. That would be what, and then it would, as sunrise changed and sunset changed, it would change with that. And we pick that just to be an identifiable target. You've got a legal sunrise and a legal sunset every day, as opposed to dawn and dusk, which is commonly used. Any other questions?
Questions? I guess not. So Eric, I guess you'll back up and...
And, Mr. Chair, we did have some folks that arrived late after the signup sheet was presented to you, so we may have some other folks that want to speak.
Okay.
And they'll also need to be sworn in as well.
All right, good.
Eric, while you're waiting for the others to sign up?
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me the reason that we are hearing this request?
Again, because it was referred back to the Planning Board by the Board of County Commissioners. There, there's a section in the ordinance that the Board has the discretion to refer it back to the Planning Board for a recommendation, and that's what they voted to do on April 17th.
The others that desire to speak, if you'd come up here with a tab and she'll swear you in.
Do you swear that the testimony you give to the Planning Board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? If so, we say aye.
My name is Billy Langley, and I live at 1757 Shepherd Mill Road. I hope everybody can hear me all right. I talk kind of soft. You hear me fine?
Yes.
First, let me tell you how we feel, how the residents in the area feel about the whole process. First, we know it's an uphill battle. We know there's been a lot of claims of needing sand. And we agree with, there's a need for sand. And there's, there's also the feeling that the Planning Board is carrying the ball for the mining operation. And we may be wrong, but everything I hear points in that direction. Just to let you know how we feel when we start out. Now, they're asking for three permits, all at one pop, bam bam bam, three mining permits. I mean, we're not handing out bubble gum here, we're handing out mining permits. The third, the third one is the mine, the web mine, as we call it. This mine is different. And there's been a lot of, lot of talk about the pretty ponds that are located along 264 West, when you go by, and they're nice and sloped, and they're green, and they're pretty, and they've got houses around them. This is not going to be the case. We're talking about mining on an industrial scale. They don't want to mention all the equipment they've got. They seem to never mention the dredge. You know, it does, there's a lot, this, this mine is going to be way bigger, way bigger, way, way deeper. This is not a pond. This is a true mine. And we're going to have to put up with it, not for two weeks, not for three months, like little ponds along 264. We're talking about 15 years of mining in one place. And if they get the contract to move all that sand to Greenville, there are going to be thousands upon thousands of sand trucks rolling by our door. We do not want a sand mine in our area. We love where we live. We live there because we like to live there. And that is true. That sand is needed for various products around Greenville. But there's sand available in other places, and we've had a sand mine for a long time. It's time to share the grace with other people. I don't think that the need for sand should drive the permitting process. I think the need for the permit should be in the interest of the people, too. And we, as residents, have to consider a lot of things. We have to consider, when this mine is operating, and the banging and the clamoring begins, and it will begin, they can talk about it's 40 decibels all they want to. I live two miles from the mine, and I hear it, okay? We have to make a decision. Are we going to hold up in our house? Or are we going to be run off of our own property by people that live in Wisconsin? So we're asking you to take the best interest of the people of Pitt County first. Let's not let money and the need for sand drive this agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Other gentleman that, yes.
How you guys doing tonight? My name is Jay Ochsler, I live in 1056 Shepherd Mill Road. Me and my wife just moved here probably about six years ago. Nice neighborhood. I agree with my neighbor just said, 100%. Also, one thing I didn't like is the traffic. There's tons of dump trucks backing down our road, just like he said. And if there's an alternative, they can go down Satterwhite, Satterwhite Road, because nobody lives on that road, going back to 264, instead of coming down Shepherd Mill Road, 100 miles an hour. So that's one of my concerns, and my wife, is the traffic. But I agree with 100% what he just said also. So, but if you look right here, you go down Shepherd Mill Road, the mine's right here, you can come up here and go right down Satterwhite Road, where nobody lives, and then back to 264, on Highway 30. So that's an alternative, too. And slow the speed limit down on our road right there. Slow these dump trucks down, going 50 mile an hour down our road. So that's my main concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would I be allowed to offer a response?
I wanted to point out a couple of things. I'd also like to specifically object to the testimony about the hundreds and hundreds of trucks. That's speculation. We have no way of knowing whether there will be hundreds and hundreds of trucks, or whether there will be, whatever the number is, that, we have no factual basis on that. What we do have a factual basis on is that this site is located 600 feet from the closest residence, 1,800 feet from the paved road. We've got wooded buffers, both on the paved roadside and on all, all sides of the site, for that matter. Only the haul road itself would be able to be seen from, from the paved road or from any of the residences. So I'd like to just make that distinction, that, that it is, it is located significantly off the paved road, and that also, we have, we've gone out and done some observations since, since the last meeting that we had. And there are, there are trucks that travel that road that are not our trucks, that don't have anything to do with our mine. We are not able to specifically determine where they're coming from or where they're going to, but there's a lot of different routes that could be taken in that area. And so there are a number of trucks that are traveling that travel up and down the road, don't stop at the mine, aren't coming from the mine. So, and I'm sure everybody would, would agree with that. I mean, that's just the, the traffic that's...
I don't double it. There's always sand, there's always sand. Where's the, where's the sand come from?
The trucks, I'm sure, that have sand are coming from our mine, but you, I guarantee you, we saw it with our own eyes, there's trucks that come and go up and down Shepherd Mill Road that aren't turning into our, into our operation.
Excuse me, but nobody interrupted you when you were up here?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one, one question. You, you're right, you can't speculate on how many, you know, trucks, I guess, come in and out. I mean, I buy from that mine, so I mean, I use that, I go to that sand pit all the time. But you can't tell us how many tons go out of that sand pit on an average day?
I'm Joseph Riley, I own Peck Creek Mines, that operates the sand mine. I figured this might come up, so basically what I did... might come up, so basically what I did, I went and picked the four busiest months of last year, when we were shipping out sand during the day. And out of those four months, we came up with a total of two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine trucks leaving our mine site over that four-month period. And if you break it down to, we haul five days a week. So if you divide the five days into that, it comes up to be thirty-one trucks a day. And if you, if you say we haul on Saturday, which we do not, it's twenty-five point six trucks a day. And if you say we haul all week long, it would be twenty-two trucks a day. So April to July, the end of July, is our busiest time. That's what we hauled last year. And out of all this traffic, or the twenty, twenty-six hundred trucks leaving our mine site, those trucks divide up and go three different ways. If we're going to Washington or Simpson, they'll go down the Satherite Road. I mean, the Shepherd Mill Road. If they're going to Greenville, Rocky Mount, Tarboro, most of the traffic will go down the Satherite Road. They'll make a straight shot down to thirty, take a left on thirty, and hit two sixty-four, or go through Pactocks. So that's pretty much the count for the busiest time of the year for us for last year. And, you know, as far as trucks concerned, I pay heavy, heavyweight tax, road tax, diesel fuel tax for the trucks. So the way I see it is, the trucks, we really use roads anytime we want to, because I pay for the use of it. And as far as speeding, I don't want my trucks to speed, or anybody else's truck to speed. And I think that would be an issue for the highway patrol to implement the laws that are already there on that highway for the public, as far as speed, driving recklessly, or whatever it may be. I definitely don't want my trucks to do that, because I have liability insurance on these trucks as well, and if they're doing so, I'd like to know so. But, you know, what four trucks drivers that I have, they're pretty good guys and they drive pretty well. And even when they sharp curve down my Mr. Langley's house, I mean, eighty, eighty thousand pound truck coming around that curve cannot take it going so fast. And when it comes out of the curve, it takes a while to get back up to speed. So, you know, this gentleman's saying, flying by his house, I don't, I don't see how a truck can do it empty, probably, but full, no. And another thing, not all these trucks come out of our mine. You know, there are other dump trucks that, that haul out of the pit area that are not mine. You know, it's different names, different companies. And there's also other traffic on the road as far as trucks, other than dump trucks. So, but that's what I have for the tonnage.
I have a question.
Sorry?
What was the upper limit of your number of trucks per day?
It was eighty-five total days in those four-month period, if you take Saturday and Sunday out. It come up to be thirty-one point four trucks a day.
Okay, and a ten-hour day, that's three per hour. That's one every twenty minutes. Okay.
But.
That's a lot of traffic.
Well, it's all in the opinion of who's looking at it. The little pits, a lot more haul out of.
That's about three per hour.
Yeah. Well, how many trucks is the limit to put on the road?
I'm just saying it's three per hour.
But that's an average, too.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Hilton?
Is any community water out that way?
I'm sorry?
Is any community water out that way? Are these people all on wells?
I would assume they were on wells. Is that?
Yeah, that's why. I just want to know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request clarification on some of the comments that were made about how the site would be left when they completed any mining, when there was reference to the mining permit, like the pits that were on two sixty-four. I was wondering if the EQ could make clarification of the.
Yeah, I think they can probably provide more specifics on the reclamation process.
One of the requirement of the permitting process is to provide a cremation plan and the bond is set at the same time. Requirements as far as slopes and vegetation to be left on site, also if the pit will be, you know, populated with fish or not. But a concern is, of course, safety, so slopes needs to be graded in such way, three to one, two to one, depends on material, and also buffers to be intact during this process. So it's all part of the permitting process with us. Once when the mining is finished, then the owner has thirty days, I believe, to, to start with the reclamation, and inspection is done at that time. And then we inspect quite frequently during that time to make sure that it's reclaimed to satisfactory level.
Okay, thank you.
Could you state your name?
Samir Dumpor. I'm a regional engineer for Energy, Mineral, and Land Resources in Washington office.
Most of those regulations are coming from DNR and other organizations.
It used to be DNR, now it's DQ.
Dictate pretty much what you've got to do and how you have to leave it. Is that correct?
Correct. We do not, our rules do not address issues that a neighborhood has as far as noise level and traffic and value of the property. That's not something that we administer.
How about, how about the depth? How deep can they dig it?
I believe this particular one was proposing thirty-foot maximum and fifteen-foot average, I believe, right? Yes.
Would that be the depth that they would leave the pit at, or does it have to be left at a certain maximum depth?
I believe that it's supposed to be left at, minimum depth is required four foot, but I believe fifteen foot for, as a, average. Yeah, fifteen foot average is the.
Okay.
Any other questions?
You were saying on the thirty-foot and the fifty-foot, and you said enclosure would be, how many feet?
I'm sorry?
Enclosure, you said that once it closes, you would leave it at? How many feet?
Um, I'm not sure that I understand the question, but.
You're talking about minimum depth?
Yes.
Minimum, minimum depth is four feet, but it will be deeper than that. Depends on what's the average depth proposed.
And who monitors this and to make sure that you're in the regulations?
That would be our office in Washington, Energy, Mineral, and Land Resources. We have inspectors that will monitor this operation throughout the life of the permit. Currently, they applied for permit with us, and they are in review process with us.
Any further questions, Mr. Dumpor? Thank you. Appreciate that. I guess it's back to you, Eric, because we have, unless Mr. Riley or Edwards won't speak, it's only other people on the list. He said what now? Ask a question of whom?
He wants to rebut what he was saying.
Okay, yeah, fine.
When we're talking about sloping the, the grade, I guess we're talking about sloping the land to the point of the water level, are we not? If the water level, do we know what the water level is? And it, and let me follow that with another question. If the water level is down thirty foot, and you recognize a hundred-foot buffer, you would have to go onto somebody else's property to gain that slope?
If you would, excuse me, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Richard Pead, and I work with DNR in Washington, North Carolina.
Okay, thank you.
When someone applies for a mining permit, they, as part of that is the reclamation, and is that they gave us, they give us an average water depth, what it's going to be once they finish. They also state what the final slopes will be, and that's actually from natural ground to the bottom of that pit. And most of the time, they're three to one above the water level and two to one down to the bottom of the pit. And that's slope from where they say they're going to finish mining inward toward the pit, not back toward the buffer. Is that, you understand what I'm saying? Okay, so when someone mines and they have the hole, everything is sloped inward, not outward. We recommend when they do mine, that they dig it at the slope as much as possible so it limits when they go back to having to reslope all that. Does that, does that address your question? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Eric, you, you wearing that carpet out of the scene? So I guess, ladies and gentlemen of the board, are there more questions directed through Eric to any other person in here, or are we ready to deal with this issue? Yes, ma'am. Come up, just come up.
With the trucking situation, now, right now, the, the top number was thirty-one trucks. With this new mine, is that going to be sixty-two trucks? I mean, at three an hour, that's an awful lot of traffic, even if they don't all go down Shepherd Mill Road. But with another mine opening up, is that double the amount of trucks that come through?
I don't think you stated your name the last time, if you would.
I was Joseph Riley.
Okay.
Basically, what, the point of permitting the Webb Farm is, the, the other site is called the Hatcham Mine, and we're in the process of shutting it down to relocate the mining operation at the Webb Farm. And so basically, it would be the same size pit or operation as it would be is what's down the road now. It just takes a, a year or two years at the most to transfer from one location to the other, other location. So we're not, not doubling up two facilities digging. It's basically transferring the business from one property over to another property. It's, it's, when you're in the mining business, you want to have reserves to move to for the future, so you don't have to shut down in, in the process of doing this, because it takes a long time to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Okay, any, anyone else? Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Riley, I don't have a problem with your, your mine now, really, I don't. But I don't see what the big deal is going down Satherite Road. You ain't losing three minutes of travel time. Instead of coming down Shepherd Mill Road, you're down Satherite, get to Highway thirty, you're using three minutes, three minutes, you know what I mean? I have no problem with your business. The problem I have is all dump trucks, and it ain't all your dump trucks, I know. And the traffic is bad, too. Think about slowing the speed limit down there, it'd be great, too. Don't need to be sixty mile an hour.
Okay.
My question would be Eric, back to what he's talking about. How would it be if they would, if we would, the recommendation coming from this board would be to do what he's talking about, if it makes that much difference with him, and not that much difference with the, with the process itself, but satisfy the community? What, what do you think about that?
Um, we don't control the highways, and we don't control the traffic on the highways. So we would have, from our end, we have no means of enforcing that. That would, in terms of, if trucks are speeding down the road, as Mr. Riley said, that's really a highway patrol issue. But we, once they leave the mine, our permit is, is for the, the property itself that is contained within those property lines and that permit boundary. Once they leave the site, we don't, we have no control and no means of controlling which way the trucks go, in which direction they take.
That would be, I'm sorry, that acts like DOT issue.
Yes, sir. DOT or highway patrol, yes, sir. And again, that's only if they're breaking the law of the road.
Okay. So I guess we're moving forward to the motions. Is that correct?
I have a couple more questions.
Just have another one, okay.
Officially, what will be the possible timeline, life of this project? One man said fifteen years. Would it be fifteen years? How, how long would it be?
Uh, that would be probably a question better answered by the applicant. They could probably give you an idea of exactly what their timeline is in terms of from start to close.
I have one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
There's twenty-two people on this letter copied here. The lady mentioned eighteen more. How many, how many people own land around this? Is it forty, or are these people, make sure exclusive, are they?
The, you have a list, you have a listing in your agenda, and that is a list of all the adjacent properties within five hundred feet of the property.
Okay.
And let me see if I can pull up, there are also, we added names to that list based off the petition that we received. On that petition that's in your agenda packet, they did not provide addresses on those. And so we were only able to verify the ones that were property owners, or registered property owners in that area. So in terms of that, there were fifteen actual property owners within five hundred feet of the site. And then from the line, it's got Branch Goodson, Charles Morton, and Jane Johnson Tripp, those down, those were ones that we, that we had on the petition. Now, there were some that were already adjacent properties listed on this that were on the petition as well, but we were only able to verify those that were actual property owners. We, we had no way of, if they were a tenant or, or a relative of the property owner, we had no way of verifying where they lived.
How close, is the closest residence to this?
Uh, if I can pull up the, pull up the aerial photo real quick again. Uh, you see the mine here. I don't know the exact distance, but I believe there's a, a home right there. And then there's another mobile home up here off of Shepherd Mill Road. So those would be the closest. I believe one of those is probably Mr. Langley's residence, if I'm not mistaken.
That's just six hundred feet.
Okay.
If you could point to, I'm Mark Edwards. I'm also with the.
Okay, Mark.
With the owners. It's approximately fifteen hundred feet, based on my calculations by pulling a simple dimension from Google Earth, to give an approximation of fifteen hundred feet to the closest house, which would be this one right here. From this corner right here.
So from this corner here to this house at this point? This, which one?
That one, yeah, there.
Right there?
The one up above it, just going there.
I think that's a barn, actually. If I'm not mistaken.
Either way, it's fifteen to sixteen hundred feet. It's the closest one.
Another question, Dan?
I'm good.
Good. Question?
The property map is a little bit deceiving, because we live on our property. We don't live just in the house. I just want to make that point. They're talking about the closest house and the measurements to the closest house. Let's talk about how close it is to your property, because you may want to build another house later. So the closest one is six hundred feet, just to point that out, okay? Now, when we're talking about the mine, they want to, to mine a hundred and thirty-eight acres, but they also own more land. And they've done core drillings all over their neighborhood. They're core drilling everywhere. You'll be back for another request, for another permit, and another, and another. Now, this is just speculation, but I'm betting it ain't the end of the mine when they, when they mine out that hundred and thirty-eight acres. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Eric, before he goes, is it fifteen hundred feet or is it six hundred feet?
I, I don't have the measurement on that.
The hours of the operation is going to be from seven to six. Is that going to be year-round, or is that going to be just summer hours, or?
Well, we don't, we don't impose hours of operation unless there's blasting involved. And there's no blasting involved with the sand mine. So the hours of operation that are listed in the ordinance do not apply to that. So, that would only be for, like, a quarry. So, the only time we would impose any kind of hours of operation is if we made it an additional condition to the permit.
Get a hand up. It'd be sworn in.
Do you swear that just the manner you give the planning board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me?
I happen to be the, my name is James.
Name and address.
I live at sixteen sixty-two Shepherd Mill Road. That is the closest residence to this mine. But as Billy said, we don't just live in our house. I have a large horse pasture, if you can see, towards the back of the property. The property behind mine is owned by my other neighbor. We have this set up as pasture, and this is hunting property. We hunt back here. Of course, it's quiet. The turkeys will come in, the deer will come in. Once this happens, we will have no more hunting. The deer won't come in, the turkey won't come in. It's gonna completely change the way we live on our properties. I also own a barn, a stable. The property I own used to be a boarding stable. I hope in my retirement to open this boarding stable back up. Nobody's gonna wanna board their horses next to this mine. They're gonna wanna come to this property because it's quiet and peaceful. And they're talking about forty or fifty decibels. It's gonna be a constant noise, and I don't believe forty or fifty decibels. Have you ever heard a truck back up with the beep, beep, beep? We can hear that beep, beep, beep two miles down the road from the other mine. How is that gonna be when it's six hundred feet from my property line? I don't see how this is a fit for our neighborhood. We've spent a lot of years, a lot of time, and a lot of money to develop this area. Billy has a beautiful piece of property. He's working it every day, so do I. So, we could retire here in peace and quiet. I think in a residential area, we have the right to peace and quiet in a residential area. We won't have that once this mine is here. It's gonna be a constant drone of machinery in the background. That's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. The existing mine, does it have, I, I know it has some type of border, but I can't remember. Does it have trees around it? It's just a berm?
Hatchram Mine?
The actual mine.
No, we're, it's, it's towards the back, and there's, there is existing vegetation that's screening the back portion.
Right.
Um, the portion up towards the front, they're, they're gonna be installing berms as far as the screening is concerned.
Right. But the new mine that's proposed, is there not a tree border around the entire property?
That, that is what is shown on the, the site plan. There's existing vegetation there, and according to the site plan, they're, they're retaining that as their screening.
Okay.
And I can make one, one, one additional, to your, to your point, that the, the decimal readings that we took on the Hatchram Mine, they're, they're, they're facts, they speak for themselves, and they were taken from, from Shepherd's Mill Road?
No, the majority of them, the majority of the readings were taken from Ward's Bridge Road, which is north of the Hatchram Mine. Uh, if you continue north on, on Shepherd Mill Road, go past the Hatchram Mine, Ward's Bridge goes to the right into Beaufort County. Uh, so those, that's where, we took four readings from four different locations. Three of those were on Ward's Bridge. The, the other one was right in front of the mine at the office, in the scales.
So, my, my point is that those, those readings were taken in, in relative proximity to the other proposed residences to the new site. And you've made the, made the point there that the new site has a significantly larger vegetation buffer than our existing site, which when you, when you overlay the existable decimal readings from the site that are facts, that are not speculative as to how far you could hear the reverse on a piece of machinery or not, forty decibels is forty decibels. Uh, and you couple that with the vegetation that we've got on the new site, there's going to be, I think it's a, a fact to say that there will be less than, than forty decibels, assuming that it's operating in the same fashion, which all intentions are, and legally, under our permit, they're, they're very similar.
Thank you.
I just wanna address the hunting issue. I'm a avid hunter myself. Me and my son, we hunt right on the mine, and we, we, we bury a limit every year with turkey and deer. So, I, I don't think it affects the wildlife. If anything, it would help it in the long run, as far as having open water for nesting areas for wildfire, wildfire and whatnot, so.
Before you go, I have a question. How much longer do you think you have on the Hatchram Mine?
Uh, not over two years. I would say more like a year, if that much. And to address your question about how long would it take to dig the web farm, I couldn't say, 'cause all depends on how much sand you sell per year. But the Hatchram Farm, we've been there since, uh, two thousand and ten, and I think, uh, the majority of what we dug back there is probably fifty, sixty acres, if that just give you a timeframe.
Probably dictated, uh, very much by the economy and the supply-demand issue, which Pitt County is, uh, I guess inundated with sand mines right now, in reference to all the constructions that are going on, the bypasses, et cetera. So, I guess, for Mr. Riley, it could be quick, could be slow. All right, ladies and gentlemen of the board, any further questions here before we move on?
Well, I'm still stuck, Mr. Chairman, I'm still stuck on the, the road. I wanna, I wanna get off that road that he's talking about and get on the road over here, where, where he's, where you're talking about. I wanna get back over to that road. So, um, I can't, I'm trying to think back in my mind how we do that, but some kinda way we need to, uh, to put that in as a condition, that they go down that road, 'cause I think that they want to go down that road to give you peace, so they can have their mine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I think that they need to just speak with the DOT, and they could reduce the speed limit on that road, but that's not for, you know, for us to decide. I mean, but they, they do, yeah, I mean, I certainly would recommend that they speak to the DOT, and, you know, maybe the DOT can address that.
Exactly. I think, I think the issue at hand, and, and obviously, this is an emotional issue, but the issue at hand, it seems to me, is that, are they compliant with the regulations and conditions worthy of the permit that's being applied for? So, Eric, I guess we're going, moving to you.
Uh, and, and as I say, from our staff recommendation, it, it meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, that's how we review it, is based off tech, the technical merits as to whether it's, uh, whether the proposed plan is, uh, meeting the setbacks and the requirements of that ordinance. So, again, we do, we are still recommending approval. Our staff recommendation has not changed. And so, with that, Mr. Chair.
I call for a vote.
Yeah. So, again, just to remind the board, uh, we do, uh, recommend two motions. The first motion, uh, to be whether the, the conditional use permit application is complete and complies with the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, then the second motion to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. That is our staff recommendation.
Okay. All right, before us here, ladies and gentlemen, on motion one, you can read it here. It's acknowledged that the conditional use permit application is complete and complies with all applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, I guess I'm calling it for a vote, and for all those that are in favor of this motion.
Mr. Chair, if I may interject, if, uh, before you take a motion, if you close the public hearing as well.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So, you got one final comment? Okay.
There you go, final comment.
This mine request may comply, but they have flagrantly violated the existing permit, flagrantly, by mining beyond the hundred-foot buffer, mining on other people's land. Now, the cup requirement says that that is grounds for denial of a permit. You have grounds, if you have the will. The grounds are there.
Excuse me, I have a question. One thing, um, I do know that these mines are monitored frequently by the.
Yes, they, they are, but somehow, in that monitoring, the, the operators of the mine, their consultants, and the representatives of Pitt County overlook the fact that they were a hundred, that they were, they were mining in the area they were not even permitted to mine in. Somehow, that happened.
That's an issue that this board doesn't handle, Mr. Langley.
It don't, but it bears, it bears on the decision of whether you issue that person another permit.
Thank you.
Now, in, in, in our area, we're not asking for an alternate route for a truck. We're not asking for a, a, a new pump motor. We're asking for no mine. That's what we're wanting. We don't, we're not going down any other way.
I think all people up here understand that.
Mr. Langley, uh, is it, Mr. Langley?
Yeah.
You were saying that there was mine, I mean, you know, basically, what we wanna do, you know, I, I think this whole thing is supposed to be, be able to prove that beyond, if I'm mistaken, is be able to prove that beyond the shadow of doubt. Uh, I don't know. Is that correct, Eric?
At every meeting we have, we're reminded by the board to come with facts.
Right, right.
So, they went out and they get decimal readings. But we have about thirty people that say that no one bothers them. Is that not a fact? Is that not a fact?
That's what I'm hearing.
That's fact also.
I like to say that, uh, and I'm, I'm talking to everybody here. In no way do we want the citizens of our county to be harmed, and yes, we are concerned about your welfare and your safety and your quality of life.
Thank you.
And when it's left up to us to have to make these hard decisions, Pitt County has experienced a significant amount of growth, and, and sand is needed, and soil is needed for these new developments. And I want you to know that, uh, on this, on the north side of the river, uh, we have, have a whole lot of sand holes, sand mines.
It runs all the way to the coast. It's a big band of sand.
And, and we, we, the, the county is gonna need sand, but you can best believe that the hard decisions we have to make, uh, we feel with everybody, the businessman, uh, we're growing the economy here. Uh, the sand has gotta come from somewhere, and you can best believe that if it's anything that might stand in the way, that might hurt you, uh, your safety, uh, we are concerned, and that's why we are here. You know, we, we're not here to hurt the businessman, and we're not here to hurt you, you citizens, because I know what it's like to have property, and you want to continue to hunt, and.
Appreciate it.
You wanna continue to fish, and we are concerned, and we're gonna make the best decision we can possibly make.
Well, we're concerned also, and, and we're not, we're, we're not belligerent or, or ugly about the whole thing. And the Bryleys are good people. They're hard-working people. I'm friends with them. I buy sand from them all the time. They've been very accommodating to me. But if my brother was putting a sand mine beside my house, I don't want it either. It don't change the picture. And at, at, at a recent meeting, and you can hardly talk about one mine without talking about the other one, there was a noise issue. Well, the noise issue stemmed from diesel, diesel engine. And there was, so, so they were, they met with the, with the citizens, and, um, what they got, um, was that they're gonna change this diesel engine to an electric pump. I was listening to a John Deere tractor running the other day, and it was carrying eight rows of culprits behind it, and when it went by me, I could hardly hear it. And it dawned on me, why don't they put a muffler on that engine? You know? It's been bothering these people for eight years. It's, it's not, it's not a motor. The, the motor was the easy way out. They ain't say what they want to, anybody say what they want to. Replace them, that motor was the easy way out. So, you know, it's, uh, it's a tough situation, and you guys are in a tough situation. I know that. I know you, you, you're not being, trying to be harsh on citizens, but we got a life to live out there, too, just our home. So, and I appreciate your remarks pretty much.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're gonna close the public comment section now, and move into our business at hand here. And just to go back where we started just a minute ago, we have a motion before us to acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete and complies with all the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, I am calling for a vote. And all those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Jordan Smith, Assistant County Attorney, um, I would just say that a motion actually hasn't been made. These, these are staff's recommendations, so somebody would have to make a motion, it would have to be second, it'd be before the board.
Okay, someone from the floor, uh, make a motion.
I make a motion that it is, um, complete and complies with, uh, the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so motion on the floor, second? Second. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. All those opposed, by a like sign.
Five to four, was that the vote? So, five to four, that, that motion would pass.
Okay.
And that.
Lower the count.
That's the recommendation in advance. It's for the recommendation to carry back to your futures.
Well, that, that was the first motion that they voted on, for the application being complete. So, that was the, the five to four, that, to acknowledge that the conditional use permit application is complete and require, implies, complies with the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, that would be the first motion. And so, Mr. Chairman, we just need a vote on the second motion as well.
Okay, um, we need a motion in accordance with what's on the screen here before you.
I recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve. I need a second.
I will.
Second from Ms. Barfoot. All right, this is, the motion is to approve. Please indicate by raising your right hand, those in favor. Those opposed, by a like sign.
So, five to four, so that motion would also pass. And again, uh, just to remind the board, this, this will go back to the Board of County Commissioners. We'll, we'll forward this recommendation to them, uh, and it'll be heard again June nineteenth. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. Thank you for your comments. Okay, Mark, I guess you're on tap for the rezoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have two rezoning requests. Um, they're both initiated by Pitt County, and they relate to, uh, oh, wait just a second.
Let's hold for a minute, let these ladies and gentlemen leave. Okay, Mark, I think it's calmed down now.
Uh, tonight, we have two rezoning requests. Uh, they're both adjacent to each other, and they relate back to a previous rezoning you heard, um, at your March meeting. Uh, so the first request is to rezone five point two acres, um, located at twenty-four seventy Ramshorn Road. It's, uh, close to the intersection of two sixty-four East and Ramshorn Road, and the request is to rezone from General Com. And the request is to rezone from general commercial to rural residential. Um, and like I said, this, uh, relates to a rezoning that was approved by the Commissioners at their April seventeenth meeting. And, uh, these county initiated requests will help ensure the zoning consistency and compatibility in that area. Here's a aerial view of the subject property. Um, you can see its location close to, uh, to an intersection of two sixty-four and Ramshorn. Um, there is an existing house on the subject property. Here's a view, uh, from Ramshorn Road of the property. And this is our future land use map, which has the area designated as rural residential agricultural. And that designation is intended to include low-density residential, agricultural, forestry, churches, and limited commercial. This is our existing land use map for the area. Uh, you can see the property is currently being used as a, a residence. Um, there's some other residentially used property in the area, uh, but it's largely undeveloped farmland. Here's our current zoning map. Um, you can see below the subject property, uh, the, the larger piece that's zoned RA, that was rezoned recently. Um, that was general commercial. And once that was rezoned, it left this, uh, a pie-shaped, uh, piece of general commercially zoned property, um, which you can see. So the request is to rezone to rural residential, um, and that district is intended to accommodate low-density, single-family residential uses and their associated supporting public and institutional uses in areas that generally do not have access to public community water or sewer. So Pitt County believes that this request is consistent with the land use plan because the property has an existing residence located on it and the site is located adjacent to existing rural residential zoned properties. And we believe their request is reasonable and within the public interest because the majority of the surrounding properties are similarly zoned as rural residential and rural agricultural. And, uh, this will help re- remove any inconsistency in the zoning map. The staff recommends approval of the request to rezone the five point two acres from general commercial to rural residential, um, parcel six, seven, three, three, one. And we recommend that the request is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan and it's reasonable and within the public interest. So this, the outline of the rezoning process, um, you can entertain public comments. Um, and then you'll make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners and they're scheduled to hear this request and take action on their June nineteenth meeting. So, I'm not sure if there's anybody here for, uh, public comments, but.
Uh, anybody have any questions for Mark on this rezoning request? If not, uh, we'll close the public comment and ask for a motion.
A motion, we approve their-
Okay.
A second.
That we approve. I need a second.
Second.
Second from Ricky. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the second request is, uh, for a parcel just north of the one you just considered. Um, I did speak with this property owner and they, and they are not opposed to this request. Um, same with the, the last case as well. He, he had firsthand knowledge of property owner's desires there and, uh, they were okay with it as well. Uh, so this request is also initiated by Pitt County to rezone three point one acres on Ramshorn Road, um, parcel number two, three, eight, one, from general commercial to rural residential. And like I said before, this stemmed from a, a recent rezoning request out there. You can see the subject property is outlined in yellow, uh, is a larger parcel. This a view from Ramshorn Road is pretty much a vacant parcel. There is one existing agricultural building on site. So our future land use map is shown here. Um, like previously, uh, discussed, it's rural residential agricultural. And that's intended to include low-density residential, agriculture, forestry, churches, and limited commercial. Here's our, uh, current land use map. Um, the property is undeveloped farmland. And here's our current zoning map and you can see the two portions of that parcel there were left as, uh, general commercial. So the request is to rezone to rural residential and it's intended to accommodate low-density, single-family residential uses. And we believe their request is consistent with the land use plan because this rezoning will help minimize potential conflicts between incompatible land uses. And in addition, the site is located adjacent to other existing rural residential zoned properties. And we believe their request is reasonable and within the public interest, uh, because the majority of the surrounding properties are similarly zoned. And this would, all, rezoning will also remove a inconsistency in the zoning map. So the staff recommends approval of this request to rezone three point one acres from general commercial to rural residential on parcel two, three, eight, one, and that the request is, uh, consistent with the land use plan and reasonable and within the public interest. And the Commissioners will, uh, hold a public hearing regarding this request at their June nineteenth meeting as well. Any questions on this one?
Any questions, Mark? Okay, I'll entertain a motion on this request.
We'll make a motion that we accept.
Approve.
Yeah, approve.
All right, Ricky's made a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Second, Mr. Ross. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. All those opposed?
Thank you.
Very thank you, Mark. Okay, James, you're going to take it home, huh?
Yes, sir. Just a few informational items and, uh, you know, we talked about development coming into Pitt County. And tonight, just want to give you an update, um, some information that was provided at a recent transportation meeting about some of the major projects going on here in Pitt County. If you drive any at all, I'm sure you're encountering them uh, in any given time during the week. Uh, the first up is very close to where we're meeting tonight is the, uh, Tenth Street Connector Project, which also involves the Farmville Boulevard improvements. And basically, starting at Memorial Drive on the west end, uh, where Stanton'sburg Road leads into Farmville Boulevard, there's a four-lane divided, um, facility that's being constructed there and has been under construction for a while. So as you can see on the screen, it's over half completed. My understanding that, um, more than likely, the, um, new portion of the road may open very soon along Farmville Boulevard to allow some additional work to happen on what was the existing roadway. So, uh, there may be some uh, general relief coming in the near future. It'll be a much smoother road in just that vicinity. Of course, this also includes an overpass of the bridge as it's going through a newer line segment, um, through, across several roads before it gets to the railroad crossing and then ties into Tenth Street. So, and then it will come back down to grade along Tenth Street just before it gets to Evan Street. So that's your full segment. So all things, um, considered, we hope to have this completed, or Department of Transportation hopes to have it completed within the next year and a half. So towards the end of next year, twenty eighteen. The other big project that's been going on for a little while now and already about quarter of the way completed, that's the Southwest Bypass. You may recall that will take off just west of where we're meeting tonight, where two sixty-four comes into Greenville from Wilson. Uh, there at the existing, um, alignment with the, um, Cloverleaf, you'll be able to drop southward then and go across two sixty-four A, Pecoson Road, NC nine oh three, and then come in just south of Aiden and connect back to NC eleven. So about thirteen miles and that's actively being completed or constructed now with an anticipated completion date of November, November twenty nineteen. Some other items that are, I'll say, smaller scale, but still safety improvements nonetheless along NC forty-three South. Um, a lot of new development going in along this area, a lot of traffic, existing commuter traffic and just, uh, travel in general on NC forty-three South. Uh, some improvements at, um, the intersection with Ivy Road. And just if those of you that are familiar, that is not a mistake on the map. This little green area here is part of the city of Greenville's, uh, city limits that was just recently annexed. So that just is an indication of, um, the type of development that's going to go on in that area. And this is going to be development on sewer, so it'll be a lot denser as far as compared to what you would typically deal with in that area. So that's just one indication. Uh, also some realignments along further south near Best Farm Road of a curve in that area. Similarly, if you've ridden that segment lately, you know there's been some improvements right with the intersection of Toll Road and NC forty-three South. That's been completed already. So a safer turning movement there for deceleration lane. Another safety, uh, matter is the traffic light that will be installed at the intersection of Williams Road, which is kind of on the southwestern part of, um, Greenville. Williams Road and southwest, um, Greenville Boulevard, so a traffic sooner going in there. And then a lot of roads resurfacing projects going on throughout the county. US two fifty-eight, two twenty-two, Stanton'sburg Road, uh, two sixty-four A, um, also Pecoson Road. And there's a whole listing. We used to have what was called a secondary road paving project. Uh, this year, there are eighteen road segments that are actually be, uh, resurfaced uh, sometime this summer and should be completed by September. So a lot of, um, new projects going on. Just be prepared and be patient because there, there will be a lot of construction in the area. And as you come up on the construction workers, please, uh, please be safe on their accounts as well as your own. Any questions about any of those projects? If not, uh, a lot of other information in your package, different, uh, correspondences that have been, uh, going out over the last, uh, few months, as well as some, uh, different articles and your monthly reports. So, uh, and as always, you can visit us on the web. That, uh, address is on the screen right now. A lot of information about existing ordinances, flood recovery a- activities and the like found up on our, um, county webpage. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for tonight.
Any questions for James? Thank you, James. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your attendance and thank you for your questions and comments tonight. I think that's, uh, very good from that standpoint. I appreciate it. No further business now. I'm glad to meet you, gentlemen.